I'll start to present.
Is there some spreadsheets we should get opened up Nicole, are you going to be referring to?
Uh, nope. I just have a brief presentation for you. Um, hold on. Ah. So I, I guess we haven't gone much further than where we were last time. There's no really more information. So, so where are we at? We don't have a set budget date. We're potentially looking at maybe absentee ballots for everybody. Not sure. So I guess this is how I'd like to move forward. These are my recommendations. So as we discussed last time, we were looking at about a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in difference. From what they were going to give us to what they're actually going to give us. So I recommend that we cut that amount out of the, the budget expend, budgeted expenditures and wait to see what happens. I mean, we currently already appropriate almost eight hundred thousand dollars on our budget. And that's a reduction from where, when I started here. So there's so many unknowns. I don't want to continue to appropriate. When we don't know anything. I mean, in the last two days alone, Cuomo's talked about fifty percent in state aid cuts and twenty percent in state aid cuts. So appropriating more would just be funding areas where if there is a twenty percent aid cut, we're talking about one point eight million dollars. We're gonna, we're gonna be in some serious situations. So I just put together this, um, uh, this slide is just what I'm suggesting in terms of expenditures. So here's what our actual was. Here's where we started, that original. Twenty twenty-one is where we started. And these are the adjustments I would make for these lines. And I can give you a better detail if you guys want me to. I haven't added the, I haven't reduced these lines yet in our actual budget. But this is, this is where I'm comfortable. Um, in terms of expenditures and I can, uh, like I said, if you guys are comfortable with me moving forward with that, what I can do is put that in, um, I can give you the adjusted areas, like the budget line items, and then send you out that big giant packet again if you want.
Just in general, how did you cut two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars?
Oh, out of contractual. Um, some of the bigger items were things like we had a wiring project in there for fifty thousand dollars that was Bosie's. Aided per se, sort of, kind of additional express aid in there, but it wasn't enough for me to
Thank you.
keep it. So I'm working on potentially maybe getting that done this year too. If, if the, if the, um, air is right and, um, the other areas, that's a lot of technology cut in there. I think in total out of Rob's budget so far, I've cut almost a hundred thousand, not more. So, um, but part of it has been what can we do? We've worked with the administrators. Where can we cut? To make this a viable budget. So that's where I'm at.
Two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars there. Um, one eighty-four is what we were looking for. What's the difference?
So we initially started with a twenty-one point four million dollar budgets all in. That was initially where we were at.
So this is going back a couple drafts ago, not the last one we just looked at.
Yes, not the last one we just saw. The last one we just saw, I cut a hundred and, uh, a hundred and, I think it ended up being like a hundred and thirty. Because we, I had already cut the fifty thousand dollars that we were talking about a flat tax increase.
Can you give us detail on just that one thirty then? Because I think we all had a pretty good understanding of that last draft.
Right.
Like we didn't know how we made up that one eighty-four. So, so you're not proposing a tax increase then? It doesn't sound as though you're using that as.
Well, I, so I understand the position where I would like to, but I also am feeling the strain in the region for, um, what people are going through. I, I don't think a one percent tax increase here would equate to about a twenty-five dollar per hu, per hundred thousand, I think. So it's not crazy, but at this point where people are being laid off and who knows? Who knows what's happening? I mean, if we decide later that, because we don't know when this budget has to be approved either. So I'm just saying right now, this is where I'm at. If, if they start to open us back up and everything's looking good and they start to have, this is the approval date. Everything's getting back on track. I would, I would recommend a one percent increase, but not if we're going to be in this situation six months from now.
And, and what you did right here was just through cuts. You didn't, you, so this is a zero percent tax increase and you cut our way down to that.
Correct. I, me and the administrators and John, not just me. I didn't unilaterally decide on cuts just alone. But, um, and like Jordan, Jordan and I did some cutting in his area. That, a lot of that contractual and supplies, fifty thousand dollars of that is Jordan's. So.
So, so Nicole, I'm, I, I, we've gotten a couple of different, uh, pieces of information. You sent us that reserves, uh, email that kind of broke down what the reserves were.
Yup.
And then I love the attached, and the next attachment where it kind of said exactly what those reserves were. John, you sent us a surplus. Uh, a document there and I'm looking at the surplus document, document, uh, it's, it's figured out to be two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that we would, we would have in the surplus this year.
No, we'd be looking at an eight hundred thousand dollar surplus this year. The two sixty-four, that's just what we're going to save if we don't pay our contractual obligations for like vendors who are not providing us services for the, for the rest of the year.
So then with that eight hundred, and so I must have misread that and I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Where, where, what happens to that surplus then?
Okay, so let's, um,
That's where I'm getting lost.
I can, Matt, what I'll do for you, because, um, I, I don't have a lot of time is I can detail out where these adjustments have been made. In an email.
I think your question was where, what happened to the eight hundred thousand dollar surplus?
Well, I know that. I'm getting to that. That's part of the revenue. So, um, no, it's okay. Um, so for the suggested revenue, obviously you can see that one eighty-four. We cut that right out of the state, the state aid that we're, that we're going to get. And the reality would be, um, we would, that surplus would just sit in unappropriated fund balance. It's just an asset base, basically.
Okay.
It sits in cash and then, um, in a liability that's an asset for us, basically. Where when the governor comes back and says, we're going to cut your aid by three percent or four percent, I can take that money and use it. I can appropriate it further and use it.
So, so then when you look at the, the other reserves that we have, like the retirement contribution, it seems like we have five hundred forty-two thousand dollars in excess there.
Yup.
And then for the unemployment, it seems like we have forty-one thousand in excess there.
I don't want to touch unemployment right now. I'm thinking that we're going to use it. So if next year we have to end up laying off employees in some manner because of cuts, we can appropriate money out of that reserve to afford us that. That cost.
And that makes sense to me. And then the final one that I saw that there was no cap on was that employee benefit accrue liability.
Yeah.
And we're at eight hundred ninety-six thousand.
That's if, it seems high, but if we closed our doors tomorrow, that's what we would owe people in their, their vacation and sick time.
Okay. So you're, you're, you're recommending that we don't touch that. We don't look.
Yeah, that one's not one you can really touch. Um, it doesn't get touched. It just hangs out there.
Okay.
And you don't have to fully fund it. I like ours to be fully funded. Um, just because, I mean, if anything ever really happened, we could, we could have a hearing. That's a, um, one that we could be flexible, have a hearing and, and move on with using. So there are some that are more flexible than others, which is where, where we want to keep our money. Because then we can have a ten day hearing, um, or, and/or the board can just approve the use of them. Those are the ones we like to keep our money in. Like that's why we have so much in the employee retirement contribution. Because that's one that doesn't have a lot of reservations under it.
But are we currently obligated for that money? Like, is that how much we owe people as you said?
No, no. Cause that, that's, um, so that one's overfunded. But now that we're in a position to actually use that, I mean, we should, but we, again, we appropriate, see that bought that five thousand to five ninety-nine? The eight hundred and forty-six thousand, that's what we already appropriate from year to year. So that's what we're taking from this fiscal year budget and putting in next year. So it's a lot of places, again, they appropriate a lot less, which is what I've been trying to do. And then in these situations, they appropriate more to get them to that budget, to close that budget gap for them.
So, so in terms of like our budget surplus, there's the potential for eight hundred thousand, but then there's also the fact that we're going to prepay eight hundred thousand dollars in the next year. Is that accurate?
Correct.
And so your question, Justin, of that eight hundred thousand dollar surplus is, is the really good question of the day. Do we finish our funding, the capital project, our, our share of it? Do we start to stay for the next capital project? Do we reduce, this is a thought I had after our last meeting, do we reduce the size of this proposed capital project? So what we have saved um, would fund our portion of it? Or do we hang on to this money for the rainy day when Cuomo comes calling and say, you know, says we've, we're going to reduce your aid?
Well, well, Matt, yeah, Matt, I, I, I look at that capital project, right? And we've got to get up to that two million part, right? Up to two million? Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
On our end. So we're only three hundred sixteen thousand away from that two million. I feel like we're somewhat close. And, and, and is it correct that we have ten years? That this, this window is open, that we can keep this money or? Okay. So it, I, I guess I don't, I'm still really confused about where is this money transfer? Can this money be transferable?
The capital fund money cannot be transferable.
Once it's in, it's in.
That is resort, like, so when we talk about like being able to use reserves, the capital fund is not a reserve that we can use. It has to be voter, it's not easily accessible. And if you read the law behind it, which I think I provided. Um, and if not, I can provide, um, hold on, I'm pulling it out and looking at it just so I make sure I understand. Um, it's a limited term. The restrictions has to be obviously done for a specific use. Um, voter approval is required to terminate the reserve before the specified expiration date and remaining funds must be applied to the district's outstanding bond indebtedness. So regardless of, even if we terminated it, we'd have to pay down our bonds with it.
Well, and we're, and so there are debt bonds, we're, it's whatever, is that based on? Cause that's a reserve too that we have. And that's whatever we have in intra, or I forget how that.
No, the debt reserve is the reserve that is, um, for leftover funding on obligations that we had, just like that. So, uh, if we have leftover money from our capital project, we had like seventy thousand dollars from the final phase of our, uh, seventeen point eight million dollar project. So I had to move that over into that reserve. And then we pay, we can pay down, but that reserve allows me the flexibility with our tax cap to manipulate that number to some degree. We're using appropriated fund balance.
Okay. Okay.
What, what's our timeline then? Is it forty, how many days do you have to advertise prior to the budget vote? Is it forty, forty-five?
Yeah, we know nothing right now. Cause we already started to advertise for it.
But I assume we'd have to re-advertise or?
Yeah, we're not advertise, and John can chime in, but, uh, Karen and I both had this discussion. I don't think it's appropriate for us to spend three to four hundred dollars advertising when we don't know an actual, nobody's set a date yet.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to advertise anything until we get an official, um, uh, date. And, um, there's probably going to be some guidance on if school districts need to go ahead and repost if nothing has changed from your original proposal. Um, but we're waiting on all that guidance and we will certainly follow it when it comes out. We're just kind of waiting for it.
So I'm doing the math on forty-five days and that puts us out to like June fifth as of today, right? And that keeps pushing out past June fifth, every day that this goes forward, that we don't have a firm date. I mean, it seems like we're at least talking to you, if not later.
Well, but they can also turn around and say, you don't need to post it for forty-five days. You only post it for fourteen. So it's, we got to play, you know, within the rules when they, when they come out. So.
They're sliding. It seems like it's a sliding rule. It's hard to, to catch these things.
Yeah.
What do you need from, Nicole?
What's that?
What do you need from us now?
Nothing. Just, just your general consensus that this is a, this is good for what we want to do. Um, obviously I'm going to keep you guys involved in the, in the process, but I don't think, I don't want to go to the extreme of making all these cuts. Because I don't know. Nobody knows. That's the hard part is nobody knows this. So it's very difficult to try to make these decisions, um, when we don't know. Um, the good part is that, I mean, an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus is, is not terrible. Considering two hundred and sixty thousand of that is money we were planning on spending, but just can't or are not going to now because of the situation we're in. So, so I think we're in a pretty good spot. Um, obviously I just, um, wanted to keep you guys up to date, but I don't know. There's nothing else I really need from you. It's just, this is where I'm at. This is what I'm comfortable with. I just wanted to make sure you guys are also comfortable with these situation and how I want to handle the appropriated fund balance, um, the surplus stuff. And then, um, obviously just keep you updated as we know more about the timelines.
Do you have any indication of what's, what might be the picture for next year?
Oh God, I wish I did. I mean, if I'm working on a list of cuts, if we have to get to ten percent.
Nicole, for this year or next year?
For next year. For this year, I have no idea. That's my two o'clock call is, uh, with Genesee, or sorry, Genesee. Yeah, um, New York State ASBO. And we're going to be, I'm really discussing with the, uh, the ASBO chapters around the state. Because I'm our ASBO chapter in Genesee Valley. Um, I'm going to be discussing what the challenges are and the state director of the ASBO group is going to be talking about the nineteen twenty budgets for everybody.
Nicole, I really gotta go, but it, it, you know, I, I, I was looking at the Batavian today and they're, they're talking about thirty teachers going. I've just gotten off the phone with Kendall and we're, we're talking about attrition and then some cuts. Uh, you showed us phase one and phase two. And I can't recall if we saw a phase three, but there was really no mention of, of, of teacher, teacher cuts there. Do you feel like their school districts are posturing and, and, and anticipating larger? Uh, budget.
I think we're posturing based on the, the sentiments that we're getting from the governor. And I don't, in terms of Batavia, they have had a lot of hires in the last five years. They've had a lot of, uh, non-instructional staff hires too. So, um, I, I don't think they're out of the realm of where they need to be in terms of asking, because I don't think they want to go out with tax increases either. Like originally they wanted to.
Right.
Then they were like, hey, how the hell can we do this? You know? So, um, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of really hard situations going on. I mean, how long do we as school districts pay people who aren't working at all? I mean, we're not a charity to some degree. I mean, the teachers are working, but really not, I mean, the administrators, but all the other non-instructional staff, unless they're called in, they're not working from home. So I mean, it's things that we're grappling with. Um, it's, it's looking at options we might have to fund further, um, future operations that we have. But I mean, the reality is every time we, we pay somebody, technically they haven't worked.
Is there going to be guidance on the state on that? Are they going to let us kind of?
There's an executive order that says we're not allowed to furlough people per se, but I guess there's some interpretation in there. I mean, people want to come back to work. I want people to be at work. I want it to be safe. So, um, John and I are, uh, investigating safe ways to maybe try to bring CSEA back without having to pay them additional wages. Let's say that.
There's a reality to that. Um, you know, when, when there's an executive order that we're, that we should not furlough people, but depending on how long this goes, um, you know, that's why I'm meeting with the CSEA on Thursday. Um, there's a little bit of, uh, you know, truth and reality to all of this.
Right.
And what we can actually sustain and what, what, you know, what the given situation is.
I mean, I've costed out what it would cost for us for, for things that I will continue to send John, but I, I, you know, we all just need to be aware. I mean, again, we're a school district. We're still operating. Um, we want people to come to work. We want, you know, we want to pay people a, a wage, but at the same time, how long are we supposed to pay people who aren't working? Any business person would have that same thought, I would think. So.
But this is a contract issue, isn't it? Because the contract reads that if the school is closed for an emergency, that that's what we have to pay.
Right. Technically, we only schedule five emergency days. So the reality is.
And when that, when that was written into the contract, nobody ever forecasted something like this to occur. So you're absolutely right, Lorna. And I know that, um, we have met, and I'll mention this to the, the CSEA, you know, um, are schools closed? That's really, that's really the, the number one question. Um, people can say, no, our teachers are working. Our kids are still receiving instruction while it's not physically here on campus. Our school is not closed. I'm here. Uh, Nicole is here. Our administrators are here. There are people here on campus. So maybe our schools aren't considered closed.
I thought the governor said they were closed.
Well, that, that's just him using that language and that we can't reopen because it's, it's his decision. But in the meantime, um, it's different than saying, okay, we're closed because we can't get here because of the weather or some natural disaster. And that's when you pay the people that do need to come in, you know, the time and a half. But in the meantime, you know, I can get here safely. I can work here safely. And as long as we follow the guidelines and, you know, protect the people that are here. Are, are we truly closed?
The other thing is we're allowed to have up to fifty percent of our staff here.
Well, I think if you think of, uh, the, the, the technical definition of closed, it would mean to be inoperable. So it would be operated, right? So I, I don't believe that any, any person would believe that our school is still not operating within these conditions. I, I've, I've received many reminders from Mrs. George today, uh, which are, I've received uh, lots of information from Mrs. Crawford today, which are appreciated, lots of contact from them. Uh, and my older daughters have been, uh, receiving stuff from, uh, eighth and eleventh grade stuff. So I would say that they're still operating. I would feel so. I think that this, this definition of closed, um, black and white, yes. Doors are locked, can't come in, not operating. But the way you're looking at it right now is a different context and I think that that may have to be adjusted.
I mean, other schools are doing that. Have, they started off that way. So they haven't paid their emergency wages to anyone. Um, and they've continued to have staff working in, in districts, just socially distancing, et cetera, et cetera. So I just think it's something we have to look at.
Some school districts are going forward with capital projects right now. My, my, my district now is getting air conditioning put in and there is twenty-five gentlemen on, on my floor that I work at and Kendall. Uh, I don't consider that closed. Uh,
And, and capital, yeah. Right. And, and districts that have current capital projects, yes, we do not fall under the restrictions of the executive order. So, um, you know, that was a question about a month ago when all this came about. And I want to say for about a week, um, it was kind of in limbo, but, uh, school districts were given the go-ahead that we do not fall under those restrictions in capital projects as long as they fall under the guidelines of, you know, disinfecting and making sure that there's social distancing that their capital projects are, can continue.
Isn't there going to be a judge that needs to decide what our CSEA contract reads about emergency closing? Isn't, I mean, we can want them to be, want the definition to be changed, but if that's the term of the contract that we've made with the non-teaching staff, then.
Right. Um, again, Mike.
Begs the question, how long are we going to pay them without them actually working then? How long are we supposed to pay them at all without furloughing them or laying them off? When they're legitimately not doing anything.
Going, going to the ladder, going to the ladder is, it can, it can, it will go back and forth, um, depending on where the ladder falls, I think. You know what I mean, Lorna? So like if it.
I absolutely know, and I absolutely know what I would prefer and what makes sense to me. There's no kids there. Why don't you come in and do your summer work, blah, blah, blah. But if contract reads a certain way that when we're closed for an emergency, they get paid if they come in time and a half. Then it seems to me like maybe it should be taken to a judge right away and say, what are you going to rule? Because.
Well, I don't think we have to take it to a judge right away. Why wouldn't we just ask them to be honored by, we're still paying them when they're not doing anything right now? So if we call them in, don't they agree that considering it's been six weeks since we started all this, that they should just come in and do the work that we asked them to do in socially distance? And then still continue to get their regular paycheck?
I guess.
That's my position.
Yeah, it, I guess it's worth a try to ask.
Right. And that, and that's my conversation on Thursday. Um, like I said, the CSEA, we began these discussions, um, a few weeks ago. And they changed their label or their labor relations specialist. So I'm meeting, um, um, with them on Thursday to say, you know, we could put you on a rotation where maybe you are only working one or two days a week, but you're being paid for the five days. Um, and, but when you do come in, it's, it's not going to be, you know, the time and the half. Right? So there just needs to be a little bit of a, of a compromise and understanding, um, you know.
Right. Um, so I got to run, but just besides the hundred and thirty K, is there anything else anybody needs from me besides, um, further clarification on, um, the reserve fund plan?
Nope.
Can we access your presentation after this meeting closes?
I'll send it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, sorry. I have to leave.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mexico. One, one point of technicality, John, that I'll point out is that our website very specifically says that our school district is closed. So before we try to make the, you know, argument that technically we're not closed, we are open for business. We just need to make sure we understand our, our website says we're closed.
Yeah. And this is something that just recently came up because, um, I know other school districts are running into some roadblocks, um, with their, their local unions. Um, what, what frustrates me the most is obviously we've never been through like this ever. And, um, you know, it's, it's just a reaction. Um, you know, what is, what is going to happen when the governor does come out with a, a date for budget votes? Everybody's going to be scrambling. And again, you know, we're making these rules as we go along, you know, and that's never a good thing. And I don't like to be reactive. I like to be proactive. And, you know, when the governor shut down schools for a couple of weeks, we said, okay, you know, we're, we're all right for now. Um, we can get through this. And now we're looking into possibly not coming back at all. And unfortunately, there's some concern out there, you know, do we return in the fall? So, you know, it's day to day when these things are changing and, uh, we just kind of have to, you know, keep plugging along and, um, you know, we understand it. Yes, Lorna, as of right now, if we do have workers come in, we are, we are paying them time and a half. But again, this is not a situation that we ever imagined. And, um, you know, it's, we just have to.
This attorneys, maybe this is your Thursday conversation, carefully read the language. If it's different, if we have a locally determined, like the superintendent closes the school versus when a higher government municipality closes it? Is, has anyone ruled on that legally? If those are different situations? Cause normally, Clint, those things are yours.
Yeah, because it's all, it's all local contracts. And, you know, one thing that I will throw out there, when the governor talks about this, you know, waiver for the hundred and eighty days and all of that. One of the things that I am very aware of is in our teacher's contract, they are, you know, they're on a, a one hundred and eighty-six day. is in our teachers' contract, they are, you know, they're on a one hundred and eighty-six day calendar, you know, year work schedule. Well, that included all of the breaks and, you know, spring break and, you know, the four day memorial weekend and all of that. Well, guess what? Our teachers work through spring break, given the governor's executive orders. So there are six days that our teachers worked that were supposed to, you know, get get the time off for and not count as school days. So a lot of us are kind of scratching our head in, you know, what is going to be the end of this school year? I mentioned before, with Regent's exams not occurring, do we, if the teachers continue to work day after day after day until the end of the school year, can we can we end school six days early? And if we don't, you know, what type of recourse? What type of discussions are we going to have if, you know, the NICE unions come back and say, hey, look at our teachers work more than per their contract? You know, they need to be paid. I don't have an answer for that.
That is the current discussion, John, right now.
Right.
With NICE is what we're getting from our regional people is saying that we've worked more than what we normally would.
Right.
I don't know about that. I, you know, people are putting forth a hell of an effort out there as teachers, but.
Still a full day sitting in a classroom.
No, Jeff, no, it's not. I mean, like, I feel because of all the breaks that I have during the day, I feel like at the end of the day, oh, my God, I feel like I've worked the full day. But when you add it up and you compress that time that I've actually worked, I'm probably looking at four or five hours. So NICE is going to have an argument. Most unions are going to agree with that argument. It's already brewing right now in many local districts. It'll be curious, John, to see how they end up.
Right, and and again, why, why are we going to go through the very end of June? When, again, the last week and a half, two and a half or two weeks are are the Regent's exams? You know, why are we going to hold these kids here until the end of June? If if there's some sort of plan that we can, you know, wrap up the first week of June, maybe provide one more week where teachers reach out and kids have another week to get their stuff in. We compile assignments and the grades and the pass and the fail and say, okay, you know, we're done as of, you know, June fourteenth. We prepare for graduation, you know, why? Why extend it?
Well, I think the the one argument that they're, that, you know, maybe state or government officials will say is because of that whole regression. And especially for primary, that they want to go that full length so that they reduce the amount of aggression that's going to occur. Because it happens anyways over the course of the summer. Kids regress, and they want to milk it all the way down to the end. I I don't know if I agree with that all the way until the end of June, but it's probably not going to be up to me.
Yeah, so, like I said, we have, we have the governor on each and every day just to hear what he has to say. And we we go from there, and unfortunately, it just happens to be we're we're very reactive at this time.
That's all you can be.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, I guess we're all set till we get more direction, right? And then we'll look at convenient again about how to tighten up the budget.
Absolutely. So I know that there'll be more guidance within the next week or so. And once, depending on what that is, I think it's very easy that we can sit down and and within, you know, forty-eight hours get to a meeting if there's more financial, you know, limitations coming. You know, I work with Nicole every single day. We can get that stuff out to you, so.
John, just because the state legislature gave Governor Cuomo the authority to change the budget midstream without their approval, is there any possibility that once we decide on a budget, that sometime in October, they could cut more money from our budget?
Yes, so, you know, the governor right now has those take back windows. The one that is actually coming up here is at the end of of April. And we're very curious to see, basically, it gives him the flexibility of reviewing at four different points what the New York State budget looks like. And if their expenditures don't meet their revenues within the a hundred and one percent to ninety-nine percent, and let's say they fall short, then he has the ability to cut more aid from school districts. I will say this, that I think it's a lot of empty threats. You know, he mentioned on Sunday about, you know, the first thing that's going to go is education, and it's going to be a fifty percent reduction. That, you know, you'll, out of the seven hundred districts, you'll lose half of them. We'll we'll close our doors. And so I think he's putting pressure on the federal government to, you know, circulate this money to support all of these things. Obviously, there's, you know, all these expenditures with the with the coronavirus. So I think it's his way of just letting the federal government know that, you know, these monies and, you know, we need to be supported. He talked about the healthcare workers and that they would be the next one on the chopping block. But how do you do that after after all of this? You know, you can't have a reduce, you know, hospitals and school districts and and funding. It's just, I think it's a lot of empty threats and a lot of just, you know, you better support us. And in the end, I do think they will come through, not that there won't be, you know, maybe some cuts, but I don't think it's going to be as massive as it possibly could be. Because small rural districts like us, we would literally have to close our doors. And, you know, school districts legally can't go bankrupt. So, you know, I think, you know, while they say that, and there there's always going to be, I believe, relief packages that will, you know, come out of this. And, you know, I sit back and none of us here in the GVEP region want to write letters to our assemblymen again, because it's just so new. But I'd certainly be more than willing, again, with the with the board's approval, if if things do get bad, to, you know, support and and make sure that we get our funding. So, you know, right now, I think it's just a lot of hearsay.
Okay.
But yes, I was going to, I'm sorry, yeah, but there are those take back windows that, you know, we're waiting to see what happens.
Our next meeting is the nineteenth, May nineteenth. Just a few days after the last New York on pause, I guess we'll see. If we want to adjust the time, we'll figure that out through email, make the appropriate notices and get the message to Tim. If we do that.
Try to reach out to Tim.
Sounds good.
Okay, I guess we're all set. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Do we have to have a formal adjournment?
No, this was just a budget workshop.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Fair enough.
Stay safe.
Okay, we'll see.